Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the October 15th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, present tonight is Mr. Bessie, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, and Ms. Quirk. And I believe Ms... Is he on there? All right, Mr. Sullivan's on Zoom, and...
Absent.
Absent tonight is... Oh, my God, I'm forgetting.
Ms. Corbett.
Ms. Corbett and Mr. Bowen.
Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum. Mr. Bessie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, with which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Residents' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to address this board on something that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will move on to announcements quickly. And what I'm going to try and do is get Mr. Foster and Mr. Fredrickson in and out so that we can do the business, let them go home, and thank them very much. So announcements. Mr. Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Just a few quick things. Anyone who's seen me in the last week and a half or now will notice that I have a black eye, and many people have asked me about this. And all I can say is that what happens at Fight Club stays at Fight Club. That's the first rule of Fight Club. Only other announcement is that on the twinning, which we will discuss later, I had the opportunity now to talk with the mayor of Wareham and her escort, and we're in for a real treat. Based on our conversation, they are very wonderful, engaging, interesting people. So I'm really looking forward to their visit. They will be staying with Norma and me, so we're particularly looking forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you. None? Okay. I only have one announcement. On October 19th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Salerno's in onset, there's a 50's sock hop, which will benefit the COA. The $25 cover will totally and entirely go to the COA. If you have any questions, please call 508-273-6104. And that's all I have. Appointments. Mr. Fredrickson, Library Board of Trustees, Board of Library Trustees. Good evening. How are you? And can you identify yourself for the record and let us know why you would like to serve on the Library Board of Trustees?
Okay. All right. Yeah, sure. So I'm Jared Fredrickson. I've got my name up for the Library Board of Trustees.
One second. I've just gotten two texts. We are not being broadcast.
Who?
Can you just double-check that? I'm sorry, Mr. Fredrickson, sorry.
No worries.
Thank you.
You guys are up.
We are?
Yes.
Mr. Fredrickson, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure, no worries. Yeah, I figure, the way I see it, I've always been a big supporter of the library.
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, sure. I'm Jared Fredrickson. My name's up for Library or Board of Library Trustees. I'm just here today because I've been a long supporter of the library. I figure this is a good chance to be more involved over there. I've been able to go to three Library Board meetings so far. It's been productive. I've enjoyed being a part of that. And I figure, given some experience I have with other boards, as co-chair of the Bylaw Review Committee and in the past with the Dicas Committee, I think I can be a good asset to the board. And I look forward to hopefully getting to work and adding to this, working in this role to help support the library.
Thank you. And you've attended at least three meetings, am I correct?
Yep.
Yep. And we do have a letter of recommendation. Any questions of Mr. Fredrickson?
I move to appoint...
Do you have any questions of us?
That was easy.
Okay.
I move to appoint Jared Fredrickson to the Library Board of Trustees.
Yeah, we don't have his term.
Is there a term on that?
No, there isn't.
Let's give him a two years for now, because I know there are several vacancies. So we'll put you in a two-year slot, if that's okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. And is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve him as a Board of Library Trustees member. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk? Aye. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye. It is so. In terms of paperwork, you have to do the ethics training, you have to do the open meeting law training, and there's some other things that you tell us that you've done. When you have that paperwork, you can go to the Select Board Office and pick up the paperwork, you give them your documents, and they send you down to the clerk's office to be signed in.
Perfect. Sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster. We're going to move to item... Item 9C, which is an interim loan, and Mr. Foster will identify himself for the record and explain what it is that we are looking to do tonight. Mr. Foster.
So this evening, we need to take a vote for the Mass Clean Water Trust interim loan, CWP 2356. It's a 0% interest loan, temporary loan. It's a drawdown loan. So as we start to... The project's already started. So as the bills come in, the invoices come in, we submit those for approval to the trust. They reimburse us for the money that we've spent. They send it to us the following week. They will permanently finance... This is the first $16 million of a $36 million sewer project over at the treatment facility. It was approved at town meeting. I don't have the date, but it was previously approved for $36 million. This is the first pool, which is $16 million, and that will be a 2% loan.
October 23rd, '23.
There you go.
Okay. So the $36 million is at what percent?
Two.
And this is at what percent?
Zero.
I like that. You like that? We have a bunch of information that we need to read into the record.
Yes.
Do you have any questions of us?
Nope.
No? Any questions? No? Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to ask you to read into the record the documents that need to be read into the record.
Sounds good. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Wareham, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held October 15th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and all which quorum was present. The following vote was passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Number one, I move to that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16 million pursuant of chapters 29(c) and 44 of the general laws and a vote of the town passed October 23rd, 2023 for planning or constr...
Read all of the sentences.
You want me to read the bonds, too? Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. The bonds pursuant to chapter 29(c), 44 of the general law, and a vote of the town passed October 23rd, 2023, Article 26, for planning or construction of sewer and other water pollution control abatement infrastructure. The project. Move... I move to, for number two, that the term of the finance agreement between the town and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, the financing agreement, and the project regulatory agreement between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, DEP, and the project regulatory agreement, each relating to the notes and bonds, are hereby approved. I move to, number three, that in anticipation of the issuance of a bond, of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan notes or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16 million. I move to, number four, that each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the trust at a price determined pursuant to the financial financing Number five, I move to, five, that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form, and maturities of the specific interest rates or rates of the bond and notes to be approved by the majority of the Select Board and treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. I move to, six, that all certificates or documents related to each bond and notes, collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart, signatures, pages, document by electronic mail, in a PDF file, or by other electronic transmissions, sorry, shall be effective in delivery of the manual execute counterpart, signature, page, and such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signature for the purpose of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. I move to, seven, that all actions taken to the date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of a loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. And I move to that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution, delivery of the finance agreement, and the project regulatory agreement relating to the project. I further certify that the vote was adopted in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda of the meeting, which agenda include the adoption of the above vote, was filed with the town clerk and copy thereof, posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public in all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or above approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays and Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remaining, remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberation decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session, and that the official record of the meeting was made available to the public promptly and remains available to the public, all in accordance with GLC 30A 18 through 25, as amended. I further certify that the vote has not been amended, supplemented, or revoked and remain in effect to this date.
Thank you. May I have a second to his motion, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded as read items 1 through 8, as well as the certification. Is there any further discussion or questions on the motions? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. I believe, Mr. Foster, you have all of the documents that you need?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for... It looks simple here, but I know that the documents are about this thick.
Pretty much.
And that we very much appreciate the fact that we have you as in the positions that you have for the town here, and very much appreciate the work that you do on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About bad for four hours of sleep.
Good night, Mr. Foster. Thank you.
Night.
We'll go back to licenses. We have no hearings. Licenses and permits. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve the application for seasonal alcohol off-premise liquor license extension for, from NAP Liquor Corporation, DBA, The Jug Shop, Ashish Kumar Patel, Manager 219 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Subject to...
Subject to, all the paperwork is in order.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Once all of the paperwork is in order, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Again, this is a renewal. We have several renewals. We will be doing them from time to time in the next several weeks, and we're taking a more proactive approach, trying to get them done as they come in and as they are completed. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, next.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round common vic license for the year 2025 under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Massachusetts general laws, pending all inspections and paperwork is in order.
You can say as printed on the agenda, or you can read them.
I think we'll read them all. You want me to do them all at once?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's on the other page. My apologies. I move to...
You've already made the motion, so all you need to do is just read them.
Yep. First one, MC Bean LLC, DBA, a Cup Two Cafe, 3175 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, Mass. Two, Wu and Wong Corp., DBA, China Chef, 1C Depot Street East, Wareham, Mass. Three, Wareham Percy's Place LLC, DBA, Wareham Percy's Place, 3198 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham. Four, Wareham Pizza Company, Inc., DBA, Domino's Pizza, 189 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Five, DE Foods, Inc., DBA, Kentucky Fried Chicken, 3015 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve pending all the paperwork for those five as read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you, Mr. Chadwick, and next.
I move for the renewal of the following Class II used car dealer license for the year 2025 under MGL, Chapter 140, Section 5A, pending inspections and paperwork is in order. 401, AKJ Auto Sales, Inc., DBA, AJK, Used Autos, 2234 Cranberry Highway West, Wareham, Mass. 02576. Two, Cape Cod Choppers and Custom Bike, Inc., DBA, Cape Cod Choppers, 2554 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. I'm going to ask that you include in your motion the number of vehicles that are allowed on the lots and that that be printed on the license.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. And the reason for that is because on each of the licenses, as they have been granted, they've been granted a certain number of vehicles, depending on the lot size. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so. Okay. Update on the visit from the mayor of Wareham, U.K. I guess, Ms. Quirk, you're on board?
Sure.
Please.
So the mayor of Wareham, England, is coming to town this coming Sunday, and she has very, very stunning mayoral regalia, which she will be unable to bring with her, but is very impressive. So I hope that doesn't spark any envy in our town, but it is something to be seen. We have the visit planned out so that they're basically looking at highlights of our town and our area with a lot of emphasis on history and current activities. They're very interested in the cranberry trade, so they're going on sort of a cranberry expedition. They're going around town a bit and to New Bedford to look at the Whaling Museum there and other sites there. We're going to take them to Plymouth and look at the sites in Plymouth that I think are really worth seeing this time of year, and we may take them to Ducksbury, which is where I grew up and where there is quite a bit of history to see as well. And then I think they're going to, you know, spend a day in Boston. And I'm told that the mayor is a very excellent and fast walker, so I'm seeing some nice walks in our future, and I'm hoping that they have a good time. I should mention, due to hard work by Ron and Sarah, there is an event planned for them the Monday morning after they arrive, where they will meet a number of town officials and have a chance to get a sense of what our town government is like. Now, all of this will lead up to a visit next year by people from Wareham, Massachusetts to Wareham, England. So I think it's a nice way to build a bridge to a different culture. I'm sure they'll be very polite to us about our history, it being much younger than theirs is.
And we are the only location on the continental United States that actually was invaded by the British.
That's true. We have told them that and reminded them of it.
I see.
And will continue to do so.
Thanks. Mr. Bessie, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm really excited for the opportunity to meet these fine folks and get to understand a little bit about them and maybe be so fortunate to go share on the other side. We'll see. It was a lot of work, a lot of back-and-forth discussions and deliberations to try to figure out how to make something work for them on the Monday that they're here. I'm glad that Sarah, myself, and Claire were able to hammer out the details and work with Derek, the town administrator, to work on some of the finer details. And it was a collaborative effort that I'm excited to see come to fruition and see how it lays out for potential things like this in the future. So I was excited for the opportunity to be part of it, and I'm excited to see what it comes about next week.
I would just also add that this is coming about due to a lot of hard work and energy invested by Claire Smith and Howie Smith. They have been over there. They sold Wareham, England on Wareham, Massachusetts. They're really excited about the cranberry harvest and seeing our local historical site. So hats off to them.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. It's interesting, because the Historical Society has just recently finished the Captain Kendrick House, and that's a beautiful job there. And Captain Kendrick was responsible for opening trade to the far east. So there's a lot of history here, not nearly as much as the 5,000 years of history in the United Kingdom, and still digging. Anyway, there will be a reception for town employees, town department heads...
Town department heads.
As well as the chairs and clerks of our boards and committees on the 21st?
Yes.
At the Harborview. So everyone who has been invited will have gotten an invitation.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't honestly remember whether we read this proclamation before or not, but I think it would be appropriate to read the proclamation again.
Proclamation, whereas the town of Wareham in the United States and the city of Wareham in the United Kingdom share a common name and mutual spirit of community and cooperation, and whereas both communities are rich in history, culture, and tradition, with Wareham, USA, being known for its charming New England heritage, and Wareham, UK, for its picturesque landscapes and historical significance, whereas the citizens of both towns have expressed a strong desire to foster a deeper connection and understanding through mutual exchange and collaborative efforts. Whereas twinning will provide an opportunity for cultural exchange, strengthening the bonds between our communities. Now, therefore, we, the leaders of Wareham, USA, and Wareham, UK, do hereby declare that celebrate the twinning of our communities. This form of partnership shall be marked by, one, cultural exchanges, encouraging visits, programs, activities that promote culture, understanding, and appreciation between our towns; two, community engagement, promotion, joint events, initiatives that bring our residents closer together and enhance our shared sense of community. Be resolved that the twinning arrangement is established with the aim of celebrating our shared heritage and building a future of mutual respect and friendship. Both communities pledge to uphold the spirit of this proclamation, work together towards a successful and enriched partnership. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and fix this official seal of our communities on this 21st of October, 2024.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion about that spectacular visit?
Just one final thing I'd want to share. There is a fundraiser for the twinning program on Saturday, November 16th, at the Redmond Hall, and there will be an auction associated with it as well. I've never been to one of these events, but I'm told they're really fun. So I'm just letting everybody know that this is an event connected with twinning that it would be really excellent to support.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. Next, we have a discussion and possible vote, and you need to read this as the motion, please. This is an abatement for the curbside billing. There was some confusion about how it's on the agenda, but that this is a standard thing that we do from time to time, which is okay, the abatements for the curbside billing.
All right. I move to approve the abatement in amount of $1,247.10.
Is there a second?
Second.
For the fiscal year '25.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion in that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Yes, I said, I think. Discussion impossible vote to recommend favorable action on articles on the fall town meeting warrant. Now, you all got a new sheet tonight that tells you what votes the Finance Committee took last Wednesday, I believe. And we have voted on all of those except the ones that don't have any entries in them. I know that Mr. Sullivan went to the Finance Committee meeting and was able to inform them on some of the other articles that we had yet to vote on. And once we have heard from him, we can vote on them individually. Then the other thing I know that we want to re-talk about is number 18 on the warrant, which is the seasonal community designation. There have been a lot of questions about it and an enormous amount of misinformation. So I want to be able to make sure that we get that information out. Mr. Sullivan, how are you this evening?
I'm well, yourself?
Thank you.
All right. First thing I do is I believe we're talking about, starting off with Article 1? All right. Are you able to see that list on the screen?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So we're going to start off with... For just an update, we did on Thursday, they submitted for free cash. Our local rep let us know that there are six communities in front of us, and they usually take perhaps only a three-week turnaround, but they're well aware that we have a October 28th town meeting, so they're working on it. You know, our estimates are about the, you know, about the $7.8 to $8.2 million range, depending on what might be reductions through the DOR. So we do have, if free cash is certified, we will have funds enough for what we're presenting tonight. It's fairly conservative amount, so. The first item is the EMS additional, new ambulance additional cost. This spring town meeting, we appropriated $375,000 for the ambulance. It came in approximately $427,000, which was about $52,000 more. And they're basing that on a three-year build-out timeline, plus extra costs along the way due to the duration and timeframe. So I've increased that $75,000 so we're not caught unawares. And these funds will be set aside for when the ambulance... I see, since we're basically pre-funding these, taking them for three years, I see no reason why we shouldn't. We should try and borrow against them. We should just fully fund them. These funds, until they're expended, do sit aside, and while there's still some generous returns on the bank accounts, we're earning interest on it. The next item is EMS supervisor vehicle. That is to purchase and equip, and we're looking at like a Tahoe style. Just so you know, the EMS supervisor is a response member as well. I often tell the anecdote about the former director leaving his house when there was a call running out and saving somebody that was choking down the street. So it's a response vehicle that's equipped and almost equipped like a mini ambulance. And having the SUV style makes more sense than a pickup for that type of setup. The next one is the IT department, which is replacement of computers, peripherals, firewall, and switches. That's our continuing of updating our computers and such during the year. That's $50,000. Wareham Public Schools, purchase and equip three buses. As you know, we need between three to four buses to keep up with our fleet. We still do have some buses that are in the mid-2000 range, from 2006 is 2008. I was going over the... I was going over the list before the Finance Committee. We had a gap from around 2008, 2009 to 2017, which basically during that time, we were buying used buses and couldn't afford new ones. So I'm proud to be back on track with this program and make sure that we've got good buses. It's also a little bit more than what the quote was, just in case they want to do some additional items on there. And it may be worth looking into AC for some of the buses, especially if we're going to be using them during the summer. Still kind of shocking that a lot of the buses don't have air conditioning, given what we've been experiencing heat-wise, too. So. Wareham Public Schools also requesting, it's an F-550, I put or equivalent.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Sullivan. Hang on one second, sir. They're cleaning the hallway, and I don't know whether that's impacting what people can hear at home, but it's certainly impacting. Yeah, or tell them to go to the other end of the hall, please. It's difficult to have that. I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
No, no problem.
Go ahead.
I'm just glad you're still there. I heard silence only. So. So we're back at the Wareham Public Schools, F-550 or equivalent. That's a truck with plow and sander package. It's $133,000 was their request. So as you probably seen, that's a large vehicle that would have the full sander on the back. They do use that for plowing out the schools and sanding and salting them. I will tell you, it's kind of a help so municipal maintenance can worry about the, worry about the streets, the main drags and such during plowing events and not have to worry about getting the, so they can take care of that. And the school's taking care of their own parking lots and, you know, Viking Drive and such, so that we make sure that they're up and running when the streets are cleared out. This is, the next one, we're starting to municipal maintenance department. We're looking at some of the quotes with the town hall auditorium rehab and acoustics. As you know, we've redone the roof of the town hall, both sections, first the slate section, which was falling into the rubber roof section over the auditorium and cutting that and causing leaks. So those have both been repaired. And we, nice job, no more leaks. Then we repaired the ceiling in the auditorium, which had begun to degrade because of the leaks. We've redone the lighting in there. There's also now heat and AC when there, where there was essentially nothing before. And we'd like to close out fixing up this auditorium, which would include painting, you know, taking care of some of the woodwork in there, and also working on the acoustics to make it a viable room to use for large meetings, perhaps even town meetings. So this is $200,000 is the current estimate on that to make. And, you know, it would be great to have that. It's been a long time project trying to get that completely up and running, especially a room that never had air conditioning before. So it's really happy to have it working. The next one is the multi-service center generator upgrade installation, $300,000. And that would help solve the issue with the elevator and having that on the generator as well. And as you probably know from the conversations, a multi-service center is also our emergency operations center during storms and emergency events. So we do have a generator on the building. It's just not enough to take care of the needs of the entire building. So this would, this would fill that gap. Municipal maintenance is also looking for a core cut saw. That is a saw that actually cuts into the pavement. And, you know, this is, there are handheld ones that we have. As we're doing bigger projects and requiring straighter non-hand cut lines, this is a higher grade quality, which is also computer operated to make, they'll bring in the straight line and be much more efficient. We've been having to lease and beg, borrow, and steal those in the past. So it'll be, it'll be good to have our own for the work we're doing. A surf rake is what cleans up the beaches. That's what you see running down there. They have a lifespan of about, I'd say, they're usually about seven, eight years. Because of the nature of that work, it's basically rubber matting with all the prongs in there that get really beat up going through the beaches. But we had someone able to do the beaches almost every day this year. And we want to make sure that we have that opportunity going forward. The whacker sidewalk machine, purchase and equip. That is, that is a machine that's an articulating, which can, which basically moves through its center part, almost looks like a mini excavator, if you will. It's really great for the sidewalks. We used to have the bombardier or bombardier, depending on how you want to say it, machine. That's gone by the wayside. These whackers are, not only can push snow, we have other attachments for it, which we brought from the Sheriff's Department. They were actually given for free as surplus, which would fit this machine. It goes into small spaces. It's really great use and type of machine that municipal maintenance, when they have these, can really do a lot of good work for the community. Next thing is a 3500 utility truck with plow, purchase, and equip. Kind of almost the same version of what Wareham Public Schools had before, that sort of size vehicle. And once, you know, we're trying to purchase this before the end of the calendar year, before some other things go into effect. So it'd be helpful to get this in. And we'll, with what we've purchased over the last few years, we've really made a good impact and have a strong fleet of vehicles for municipal maintenance on the larger trucks. Next thing is Wareham Police Department, four vehicles, purchase and equip, $320,000. They run a little over $75,000 each with the, that's for cruisers completely outfitted and with all the equipment. We're having difficulty finding the 2024 models. They're supposed to get some in at the end of the year, but, or at the end of this month, going into November. But potentially, they could switch those over to 2025. So we've put a little padding in there just in case. And just so you know, when we expend these funds, if there's anything left over, we cannot use it for anything else. That has to be returned, and then it generates free cash again. So let's say there was $10,000 left over. We couldn't, you know, purchase firearms or there's something without town meeting reallocating that. Usually, we just close it out. Next article is the Wareham Police Department, Born Hill Tower Radio Power and System Shelter Project. That's where some of the repeaters are. And so they had the microwave on there before. There's actually, we have generators and other electrical equipment, which keep that up and running. And the shelter in there was failing and became a squirrel's nest. So we've been able to get a new shelter put in there, working with Wareham Fire. And, you know, this is our portion of the project. So it'd be $50,000, and that's running all the electrical, setting it all up. DNR, I'm putting this under them. It's a parking slash events vehicle and trailer. When we have these major events, you know, rather than having, you know, trying to beg, borrow, and steal for vehicles to tow things around and set up, we should have a vehicle sort of dedicated with, and a trailer pulling where you're putting either the sawhorses, the signage out, everything. And it should be just sort of a tailor-made project each and every time, especially as we know we have these repeating historical events. And this would make it a lot more efficient during those events and also used for the parking enforcement. That's $85,000. And then DNR onset facilities rehab, the pier buildings and bathroom on the bluffs, $200,000, where we've had some quotes on just the siding on those buildings, rehabbing them, which is fairly substantial. So we're trying to get this all taken in, including fixing up the bathrooms up on the bluff. And when I'm talking about the bluffs, I mean on, by the ban shell. And so all told, we're at $2.28 million.
Any questions of Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Comments? Oh, yeah?
Well, yeah, just, I guess just one going back, I just going up to, for the school, the F-550 or equivalent truck, would there be a reason why we would want to purchase it for the school and not municipal maintenance? Because who's going to do the, who's going to do that work when it needs to be plowed? Is that going to be somebody from the school? Or is that going to be somebody from the municipal maintenance department that would have to do it?
That's the fields.
Yeah, that'd be their fields and grounds team doing it, school personnel directly.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good question. And then they usually go to our barn to get the salt and sand packages. So make sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do you want to vote it now, or do you want to?
Let's have them just go through them all.
Mr. Sullivan, can you do Article number two, the available funds transfer? Are there any?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So what I've given, provide you, this is what we're calling the non-capital free cash use. These are for one-time items. So when you look, the first one, what I've provided you is what we're transferring, the current balances of September 30th, 2024, what the new balance would be. Stabilization fund, $150,000. And the current balance is a little over 5.128. So we'd be looking at 5.278 million. Something that's really excellent. That's been helping us with our bond rating. We don't, we used to put, when I first came on board, we had about $440,000, I think, in the stabilization fund. We were funding it through the budget. And we worked with the Finance Committee and the Select Board at the time to come up with a new process where we were dedicating at that time over half of our free cash to a stabilization fund to get that up and running. And I'm really proud of where we stand. Old rule used to be about three to five percent of your operating budget. When you think of us as like a $80 million budget, you're looking at about the $4 million range. They're starting to talk about seven to 10%. I don't see us getting up that high, but this is a really good, good standing, and it's a credit. And so right now, while we're, I believe we earn about 4.25%. It was 4.75% before the change of the Fed's change in rates. But, so we're still earning about, you know, about $200,000 a year on as well. So that's, it's a good place to be in. So it keeps on growing. OPEB Trust Fund, that's the other post-employment benefits trust fund. So that's, that's what you, our liability for our employees when they retire outside of their pension. So it's like the health, life insurance, things like that. So we've been transferring over the last few years, $300,000 into that. And it's grown fairly well. We're, before this transfer at 3.46 million. And if you just give me one second, I'll give you. Because this trust fund, the way it's set up and it's managed through Plymouth County and US Bank, we are allowed to invest in equities using it. And they're the ones that do all the investments. So Mr. Foster's done an excellent job with that. I just received our statement and our, I'll give you our historical earnings. Over the last one month, 2.04%. Three months, 6.52%. One year, 26.28%. Fantastic, you know, but not, you really look at it over a longer term. So three years at a 5.95%. But the five-year average, we haven't, it hasn't been up and running for 10 years, so we're using a five-year average, 9.43%. So that's, that's been excellent return for us. Last year, our OPEB liability, believe it or not, is about $113 million. So that's if you had to fully fund all your obligations for all your employees that you've had from the past and today going forward, and had to come up with that money for everything that they would cost, it'd be $113 million. We've historically been paying, going with pay-as-you-go, meaning that's what we're paying in our budget. It's part of the retiree health costs that we pay. And last year, for the first time, the, our OPEB obligation only grew by about 100, I think it was $181,000. So we're starting to catch up where with the, and the OPEB, even though we have these returns of 9%, you only get credit in your actuarial valuation of about, I think it's three and a half percent. So we're starting to catch up. And this is really, this is effective and really helps with the bond rating to be doing, doing something like this. So the next one is the collective bargaining reserve, putting $100,000 in there, which would bring it up to a little over $341,000. We're beginning bargaining with about eight out of our units, eight of our 11 units. So we potentially could have, that will probably, given timelines, not all be done by, by the springtime. So, you know, I can't set next year's budget with, with expectations, except what we historically do in those units with like a 2% increase or something. So you set the reserve aside for in case of any of the mid-year changes. So the next one's benefits reserve. You have certain, when employees retire, you buy out their vacation time that they have. And just depending on the contracts and some of their sick time. So we always set these funds, we would start saying these funds, excuse me, funds aside. The reason being, in the past, you'd have somebody retire and say, oh, jeez, you know, they had about, let's say, four weeks of time. So, all right, we can't hire anybody for, for a month or so. And that's just not a effective way to run a business. So this allows us to hire, you know, hopefully there's people available, but hire for the positions without having to wait. Next one's unemployment reserve. I'm recommending we take no action on that. I think at the spring town meeting, we put approximately $300,000 into it. So the 540,000, it's a good, that's a good number. And last year, we expended about $123,000. Again, we historically, we used to put about $200,000 to $250,000 within the budget. And that just didn't make any sense if we could set up a reserve. I'd rather have that funding, those monies funding positions. Code enforcement, derelict properties, that sort of speaks for itself. We know we're trying to take some actions on property and continue to clean up the town, especially for those that are really in tough shape and impacting the livability of their neighbors. And we're down $73,000 in that. So that'd bring it up to a little over $273,000. The next one is grant funding. What this does is a, we can match some of the grant funds, especially again mid-year, and they need a matching financial portion. So all the total funds on this is $950,000.
Any questions? Comments? No? No? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Before I forget, tomorrow, could you send all of these slides to Kathleen Moore in the office so that they can be included in the minutes?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
And then the, that would leave us, all told, that would leave us probably around, I'd say, a little under $5 million. And we can, depending on what we see for the spring, we can expend a little more capital than on some of the needs. But it also doesn't hurt, you know, if you want to roll these over. And one of the things was, as being asked was, why aren't you expending everything? And frankly, it's good to always have a cushion. We roll over money every year, over a million at least. But it's also, you need a capacity to bring all these projects in and together. And, you know, we want to get things done and taken care of, rather than just stacking, stacking approvals.
Thank you. Next would be the fund, the parking program, item six, Article six.
Yes. Seeking from the received reserve for appropriation onset parking account, $120,000 to fund next, next season's parking program, as well as onset-related projects. We can only expend these funds in the onset area.
What's the amount again?
$120,000.
Thank you. Any questions of him on that one? Okay. Go ahead. Item eight. It shows that we, that we did, item seven, on one of my sheets and the other one, the accept the gift of the land on 46 minute. On one of the sheets I have in front of me, we did in fact talk about it and make a recommendation. And on the other sheet, it shows that we didn't.
Well, I can give you, let's see if, yeah, I think we did.
I thought we did. So I think, I think the old.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did do that, sir. There's only one question I have on that. Would that be sub? Would that be subject to a 21E site assessment?
Not unless it's put in the motion.
So then let's go to item eight, warrant article eight, the discontinuation of two portions of streets.
Yeah, let me see if I can, I was just sharing that for a second.
You have a new background.
Yeah, we changed around the office.
Oh, cool.
And the picture that was in the further back and way the desk is set up is now, now in a different way.
Yeah, it's nice. Thank you.
All right, so which one are you seeing? It's, I'm seeing in my background, I'm, excuse me, not the background, I'm seeing up front, the, looks like the Elm Street portion. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right, so that's the portion of Elm Street that we're looking to discontinue, approximately where the old, the, what do you call it? Why can't I think of it?
Tremont now?
Yeah, no, it's not the Tremont, it's the Gitch.
Company Store.
What's that?
The company store?
Yeah, the old company store. Thank you very much. Right after approximately the old company store parking lot to where it looks like, I think Swan Drive over here. So that'd be the portion to discontinue since we're, this is going to be, the dam's going to be basically coming down and it's changing the configuration. And I don't, the new setup, I don't think would have vehicles traveling over it, so this is just to kind of help get, get through that.
For the record, that road has been closed off for several years, right?
Yeah, it's been for, I'd say about four years, maybe, maybe longer, five years or If it is, I don't know what else to do about it. so.
Longer than that, yeah.
Because when I see it, I don't see Elm Street anymore, I see Lopes Field, things like that, It was a cut through, people like to cut through because of the other intersection, but they would speed through here as well. So it's, yeah, I don't know what it would save you time-wise, so. and Heinz Field.
You have to unshare and then reshare, I believe.
Killed off the candy store.
Yeah, I stopped the sharing and reshared, so. Or speeding through there, so.
Why don't you just explain what it is that you're looking to do, what?
Sorry, I just said it killed off the candy store.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think we can take credit for that one. It's between Wareham Ave and East Central, the portion of the unaccepted road that's
No, no, I'm not saying us.
basically swamp land that beforehand was, was utilized as a dumping ground that we've
Okay, 11th Street discontinuation? Oh, do you have any questions on Elm?
cleaned up and the neighbors would like, we're looking for access to it again.
No.
No? Okay. 11th Street.
Yes, do you see that now on the screen or no? I don't, we really didn't want to open it up and have to police it, and they said they
No.
No.
Just got to get rid of, share. would rather have ownership of it. So by discontinuing it, the derelict fee statute, anyone on either side would, would own to
No.
You don't see it?
No, it's the same thing.
What do you see? the center of the, what was the road? So we're going to discontinue our interest, but we do a, a certain portion off of Heinz
The same one you just had.
So you see Tremont now?
Yeah, that's Elm Street again.
Field, so.
Thank you. And you have spoken with the neighbors in that location? Did, I hear you sort of did that.
When you first, I showed you the screen till the, when you first come down to left of it, we're going, so we're requesting it.
Okay. Any other questions of him on this one? No? Okay, thanks, Mr. Sullivan. Can you go down to item 18, which is the seasonal community designation? Again, there's been a fair amount of, in my opinion, misinformation spread around about this particular item on the warrant. And perhaps you could explain what it does, or Ms. Quirk had some questions that she raised with me earlier, and I know that Mr. Chadwick had issues that he probably discussed with you earlier.
Yes, I think the most confusing part to people, it's, well, one, I think it even made a, a local radio station. I'm kind of, I'm not laughing because it's okay to be confused because it is a confusing situation, because essentially we've received no guidance on it whatsoever. But it's funny for people to come up to say, you're killing, you're doing away with all seasonal rentals in your community when all of Cape Cod is designated seasonal communities. So it's just, it's a nonsense, it just doesn't make sense to me, but, but that would be the thought process, but I just think that's fear, so that's fine. And I think the section is a section D where it says a seasonal community may, you know, want, acquire year-round housing occupancy restrictions for, for rental or other housing, provided however that any such year-round housing occupancy restriction held by a city or town shall be construed as a restriction held by a governmental body with the benefit of section 26 of chapter 184. That restriction is basically an ownership, like when we hold restrictions in affordable housing. So you're basically, if there were a housing project or a house that wants, say, they're going to be, acquire a year-round rental for it, we can receive, we can put that as a deed designation on it, if you will, much like when you're doing affordable housing. So it doesn't mean that you're doing away with, with seasonal rentals throughout the entire community. That would be site-specific. You know, what we're talking about, and no, it doesn't mean that people can't, if they sell their house now, can't, the next person can't rent it out. It's just, those were, those are some of the things that I've been hearing, which are just, you know, the, the seasonal community. I could see that section we just talked about being, it's very confusing if you don't know what it means by acquiring a restriction, but you're acquiring, you're acquiring an interest in it. So it's the, you know, so there were some other questions, you said?
I, I just have one thing to add to that. A lot of people keep comparing it to Nantucket. One thing people need to realize is Nantucket has added a whole bunch of extra bylaws to this, not just this one. So you really cannot compare Wareham to Nantucket with this.
I, I think the comment about Nantucket was generated by me. I firmly believe that the people who live in Wareham, Wareham today and who've lived here for maybe generations should be, should be able to afford to live here. And I do not want to see a total gentrification of this town. And that's what has happened in Nantucket and other locations in the Commonwealth. I don't want to see people not being able to live in this community because it's so attractive. So that's where the Nantucket connection came from, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify what I meant. Wareham is for the people who live here, in my opinion. And I believe that this, I believe personally, that this seasonal designation would help people stay here and live here, but that's my personal opinion. I know, Ms. Quirk, you had some other questions or issues?
Just to, clarifications really, because I'm, I'm hearing rumblings as well. As, as I understand this provision, it's really only a first step in, you know, seeing if we can achieve some protections for year-round residents. Is that, is that a fair way to, to view it, Derek?
Yeah, and then there's other things you, that's going to allow to be adopted. They're creating a whole seasonal housing council through the executive office of housing living communities, which I found out that the short, the short way to say that now is HLC. We can call them the housing and living communities, so, which is, that's a boon to not have to say that every time. So yes, it's the beginning of it. You know, there's some, some other such things. The goal is if you're going to be able to allow, to build an accessory dwelling unit on the property that you have, and it should be as, as like, or Chairperson Whiteside said, it should be able for people for year-round housing. We, right now, we don't, we have people in the generations that can't afford to live here, and it would be nice for them to say, if you're putting accessory dwelling unit as lives change, to put, maybe that's where the kids go with the, you know? And then as time changes, the kids are married or something, they're starting to have children, the parents and the children swap out, and you have multi-general orational living like it used to be. I don't think it's, those are new concepts, really. It's just something we got away from when there was, you know, so much opportunity for housing. And again, you know, we have people that are making good livings that can afford to, to stay in the community. And I don't, I don't think, what we all, what we all don't want is to just turn into corporate housing where you can purchase single families all over and put an additional rental unit on it, suddenly we have, you say Nantucket, I, you know, I say Mardi Gras, it's a party everywhere. So it's, you know, the community should be livable, especially year-round. But yet, there's, at no time, for those that, that know me and know, they call me fiscally prudent or cheap, depending on the direction, it would be, it would be a little crazy to me to want to do away with the, with the short-term rental revenues that we currently receive and, and other such, such things from the rental units, so.
And it's not your intent or the intent of this law to limit the ability of someone who owns a short-term rental or, you know, several short-term rentals, to sell those properties to someone who also intends to use them for short-term rentals? Is that right?
Correct.
Or if they were to pass those properties along in their will to their children or their heirs, nothing in this would, would limit the ability of an owner to do that, right?
Correct. Unless they want to sell a deed restriction. You know, and that's, and I'm not, and that, that sounds like I'm trying to confuse it, I'm not. That's what that restriction was, that section was talking about, acquiring a restriction. It did not mean blanket, it would have to be somebody willingly that was seeking to have some sort of restriction put on their property that was selling it, much like some folks do with conservation land.
Right. But absent that, someone could freely sell or bequest their property without restrictions?
Absolutely, so.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Chadwick, did that kick another one off in your head?
Yeah, well, Mr. Sullivan was saying it's to keep residents here, and I just wanted to add, we, I was talking about this the other night, a couple of my coworkers, lot of the fire departments on Cape used to have living restrictions, you had to live within so many miles of each department. All the departments now have seen that the newer generation of firefighters cannot afford to live on Cape Cod. So they've gotten rid of the, within so many miles of the crow flies to the department. And we're seeing a lot more firefighters down on Cape commuting. Me, perfect example. You know, some of them, we have this one that's coming from Dorchester to Dennis. So this is, I think, after doing extensive research on it, I'm in agreement, and I think it's a, it's a smart idea, and the reason, back to the fire service again, is if you have all these firefighters that live far away from the fire department, who's going to respond back when there's a major fire and you only have a certain amount of people on shift? So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you.
And Madam Chairperson, you know, in all honesty, if we're going to do the special town meeting in January, this can wait for that because the effects of the ADU accessory dwelling unit legislation doesn't come on until February, February 2nd, I believe, of 2025. So if they so desire, we can certainly move that one off, we can seek to, you know, further study, be brought at the, that town meeting, or however it needs to be phrased.
Are you talking about the seasonal community one?
Correct, yep.
What about, what about your thoughts on like an informational meeting?
Louder.
I said, what are your, what are your thoughts on like an informational meeting to the public?
Well, isn't the planning board having to have a hearing on this as well as on Article 19? They are both having to do with that. So the planning board will be having public hearings.
Through Madam Chair to Jared, are you talking about something in addition that is geared to this and allows questions and answers?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, you know, whether it be in the auditorium or somewhere else, we just put it out to the public, because there's a thousand questions going on all over Facebook right now. And then everyone's adding their two cents, and there's a lot of misinformation being spewed out all over the place. I think just more or less so we can do something to have the public attend and ask their questions, and we can verify it, because I know we're going to have it, the planning board, but not a lot of people show up to the planning board. So this could be something that, hey, we're doing this this day, come in, we can answer your questions, we can, you know, get rid of all the rumors. And I'd be more than willing to jump on board with that and help out in any way I possibly can.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I think the planning for that's going to be whether you want to pass over or further study at this town meeting, and you're looking to get more information from the executive, from the HLC. And so, you know, that'd be your druthers. If you want to do something now, we essentially can just read off what we've, we've read off and provide that sort of information.
Yes, so I think both Article 18 and 19, we, we would have to revote Article 18, but Article 19, we're planning on passing over that anyway, am I correct?
Yeah, we're, that was the, the plan, because it's, again, we don't have much guidance from the Commonwealth.
Right, okay.
On it, so, and I, you know what's interesting about the seasonal communities designation? Nowhere in the legislature does it say, require a town meeting vote.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Sullivan on those articles that he's spoken to? Then I will accept a motion on one to do them one at a time, and then we'll have to revote 18 if you want to. Go ahead.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article one, approve and fund fiscal year 25 capital plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move for favorable action as presented on Article six, fund parking program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move for favorable action as presented on Article six, fund parking program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Oh, didn't catch you. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Thank you.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article seven, accept gift of land located at, oh, we've already did that, sorry.
Yeah, we already did.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article eight, discontinue a portion of 11th Street and Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Oh, didn't catch you. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Thank you.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article seven, accept gift of land located at, oh, we've already did that, sorry.
Yeah, we already did.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article eight, discontinue a portion of 11th Street and Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Oh, didn't catch you. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Thank you.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article seven, accept gift of land located at, oh, we've already did that, sorry.
Yeah, we already did.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article eight, discontinue a portion of 11th Street and Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Oh, didn't catch you. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Thank you.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article seven, accept gift of land located at, oh, we've already did that, sorry.
Yeah, we already did.
I move for favorable action as presented for Article eight, discontinue a portion
Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. I now need a motion if you would like to reconsider Article 18, and I think I heard at least two of you say that, so one of you who voted in the affirmative, which would be, you were here, right, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
If you would make the motion to reconsider the vote.
I move to reconsider Article 18, seasonal community designation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reconsider our recommendation on that article. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will be, it is so, we will be recommending. Mr. Chadwick?
We go, move for further study on that?
Pass over, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to pass it over?
Yeah, we're going to pass over.
Pass over and then further?
Both of them, I think, 18 and 19.
Okay, so I'm going to read it there as both. I move to pass over Article 18, seasonal community designation, and Article 19 amend to zoning by law, ADU accessory dwelling units.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
And the reason is that we do not have all of the information from the HLC that, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which would help us further understand and have the public understand what it is that we're representing to them. Is there any further discussion on the motion to pass over at town meeting? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, those are 400. It is so. Thank you. I think we've now done all of that. So we will move on to, we have no 48-hour business that I'm aware of. Town administrators report, Mr. Sullivan?
I think I saw a few of you there at Warren's, Warren's Harbor View for Mr. Slaven's party hosted by the Oak Grove Pinkberry Cultural Center folks, and what a really great time, and what a great building, but it really, they did a really nice job for, for Mr. Slaven, and it's, it was a really great community event, so. And besides that, working on putting some terrible Halloween decorations out and scaring the kids in the community, so, that's it.
Liaison initiative reports, boards comments. I just would like to say that at one point, when I was a select person many, many years ago, and it was Dick Post, I think it was Bud Kalanose, they were all men, and I was on the select board, Board of Selectmen at that point, and, and the select board meeting actually fell on Halloween. So I said to all of them, hey, let's dress up for Halloween. And they all did, and they all showed up, and I didn't, and I didn't go to the meeting.
Now that's a trick.
And it made national news. They were so mad at me. It was great fun. Okay, sorry. Initiative liaison board comments. Mr. Bessie?
Nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chadwick?
I have one.
You would.
Yes, I do. So state senate race is coming up. I think people really need to start paying attention to this. As you know, Senator Mark Pacico is no longer, or will soon no longer be in the seat. So TCAM TV will be holding a candidate's forum for the Office of State Senate, Third Bristol Employment District on Thursday, October 17th at 7:00 PM. The forum will be moderated by TCAM President Bob Jacobs and candidate Joe Pacico. Kelly Duner and Jim DuPont will be in attendance. The forum will be broadcast on TCAM TV and streamed live at www.tcamtv.com on Thursday, October 17th, starting at 7:00 PM. So please pay attention. This is related to the future of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I only have one. We are coming up on Halloween, and I just really urge everybody to be, drive slowly, drive carefully. We have a lot of kids who are on the streets, the leaves are falling. If there's any bad weather at all, it's slippery out there. The other thing is that we are planning to hold our Veterans Day Parade Ceremony and Luncheon on November 11th. There will be no rain date. If you would like to sign up to either join in to the parade, or attend the luncheon if you're a veteran, the website is open and available. We're also looking for volunteers, but that's, that's, that's just common around the town at the moment. We have no minutes or anything else? Anything other that can before us?
Don't do it. I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? It's not debatable? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, it is not a debatable motion. All ohs in favor, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Abstain.
Ms. Quirk?
Don't tempt me.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. I just, thank you. Wareham, enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.